I'd like to call this public caucus to order. Welcome, everyone, to our Scranton City Council Public Caucus. Today is Wednesday, November 3rd. We had to cancel our meeting yesterday due to Election Day, so I hope everybody's doing well. Tonight, we have David Trevissani, who is the Senior Director for NDC, Ben Anderson, the Project Manager for NDC, and Malcolm Forsyth, I hope I said your name correctly, the Field Operations Manager for ABM, who manages our parking garages. So, we have met with you now for the last several years, and you've given us quarterly updates on the status of the parking garages, the financial outlook, and you're here again tonight to do the same, and then you'll take questions from council. So, Mr. Trevissani, I'll turn it over to you. We have a PowerPoint presentation tonight for the audience and for council, and if you could take us through that, and then we'll ask any questions that we have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Glad to be here, and thanks for the invite. This will be our fourth quarter 2021 update. I think these have been really going along well, and providing you with up-to-the-date information on where we are with both the operations, capital update, and then, most importantly, especially with the pandemic, the financial update. As is typical, we'll start with our capital program update, some operations highlights. Ben will walk us through that, and then I'll get into some of the specifics of the financial highlights. So, I think we'll start with Ben.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, Mr. Waldenberg, Attorney Hayes. Wanted to start with our capital program update. We finally put together the final accounting of the capital projects we've been presenting to council about over the last several years. The garage renovations and on-street upgrades both finished with excess funds, while the $5.2 million reconstruction of the Electric City Garage, in its final month, finished on budget. Dave would like to discuss some aspirations for the funds that have been left over.
Yeah, sure, Ben. On the 167, that's dollars left over for capital from the funds that were made available, both from the financing and the additional dollars that were set aside to bridge the grant funding because, due to some of the higher costs associated with the garage reconstruction last year. Those dollars are still there, they're still available for capital items. We do have some programs that, some things that have been happening in the garages that I think need some adjusting, not just adjusting, actually. The Mulberry Street Elevator is out of service, it's about $100,000 repair. There is some other items that are more cosmetic in nature that we need to deal with, so we haven't made decisions yet, but those dollars will definitely be used and needed over the course of 2022. On the on-street, those dollars are dedicated for the on-street. When the council allocated money for the on-street system, it was $1,008,000 for that, for the on-street system. We came in under budget, there's $115,000 left. We really have no place else to spend those dollars. We're really fully operational now, we're happy with the way things are going. So, the way that it was approved by this body, maybe a year, year and a half ago, was that any dollars excess would be, have to be really repurposed or returned back to the city. So, that's really an open item, not asking for any decisions here today. We just did the final accounting, wanted you to make me aware that there's $115,000 left in that on-street account, and we could certainly use the dollars if this body chose to repurpose it, or we will return it to the city as per the discussions we had a year, year and a half ago.
Dave, let's go back to that for a minute. So, council would need to, or the administration would need to initiate legislation to repurpose the $115,502 in excess funds?
That is correct.
Okay. And have you spoken to the administration yet about that?
We have not, we have not. We certainly, we could certainly find places to use the dollars. I mean, one of the areas that we were looking at were upgrading of some of the commercial spaces, which we did, which we did a lot with, and Ben will provide some updates on where we stand with those. You know, the Connell space, we used some of the dollars to upgrade that, and it's now, it's now fully rented. The Bartieri Restaurant, we used some dollars to help them get into that space. We have a new tenant that Ben will talk about, which is in the Center Street Alley, that we would love to upgrade that storefront to make it look more presentable to Center Street. So, there are some more things that we would like to do, that we have limited dollars that are dedicated for capital. So, to me, ideally, it would, it would, there's ways to repurpose it, but we have not had those conversations with the administration.
Okay, and you just said a minute ago that if we didn't do anything, those funds go where?
They would revert back to the city.
Oh, they revert back to the city to go into our general budget, or however we decide to do it?
That is correct.
Okay. So, we'll make a note of that, and let's have another conversation about that, Dave, because that's interesting.
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Going on to the next slide, we'd like to update the council on several aspects of our general day-to-day operations. First, you may recall that CDPS purchased a new sweeper for roughly $84,000 in late 2020, a point we wanted to mention specifically because it improves the cleanliness of our system and adds the capacity there. And if we needed it today, we wouldn't likely be able to include it in our 2022 budget, which we are currently scrutinizing and pulling together.
And that is, that is like a street sweeper? That sweeps a garage?
Yes.
Goes around, okay.
Yeah, in the long term, it's really a savings, because if we didn't own a sweeper, we would have to hire and contract that out, and the break-even really is only a couple years. So, it's an expensive purchase. We wanted to just make sure you were aware that that was done, and as Ben mentioned, with where we are with our budget today, we probably would not have done this. We were hoping the pandemic would have gotten better sooner than it really has, so we're actually glad we purchased it when we had the money. I think if we didn't purchase it last year, we probably would still be contracting that work out. So, I think in the long run, this is going to be a savings for the system.
Savings. How often do you send that sweeper out in the garages? How often is that done?
Malcolm, could you address that? Could you address the use of the sweeper?
Yes, we sweep the garages as per, I would say, quarterly for whenever...
I'm sorry, could you pull that mic up a little closer? I have a hard time hearing you.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, yeah, so, as per contract, we sweep the garages that are required sweeping. So, I would say, we just did sweeping for a few garages, I would say EC and the Marketplace. And so, we're just, we sweep based on the contracts.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Sorry.
I do think there's a regular... We might do them specialty, but if we're going to do some painting or some striping, but normally, it's on a quarterly basis, if I remember right, but we could provide you with that specifics.
Okay.
It's a regular routine.
Okay.
So, in terms of the finances of our program, and Dave will present on those later in the presentation, what we're looking at in 2022, but we wanted to also introduce you to Malcolm Forsyth, our new Field Operations Manager. He's joined us today, and after coming to Scranton from another ABM position, where he was working in partnership with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. So, please welcome Malcolm.
Hello, everyone. Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Malcolm Forsyth. I'm the new Field Operations Manager for ABM Parking Services in Scranton, PA. If you have any questions for me, just let me know at any time, okay? I'll hand it over back to Ben.
Thank you, Malcolm.
No problem. Finally, we wanted to share a positive development from our operations during the COVID-19 pandemic. CDPS is just one tenant shy of full occupancy, as we signed three new tenants in this past spring. In the Casey Garage, O'Donnell and Fraker, a fine furniture business, of which I don't believe there are many in downtown Scranton.
What was that, you said, a furniture business?
A fine furniture business, yes, sir. And they started manufacturing and are looking to lease out a storefront in the near future, but they moved from the Midwest.
That's great.
And then also, in the Linden Garage, underneath the Linden Garage, Catch 21 Seafood and Steak Restaurant, in the former Steakhouse, I believe it was, and then finally, Steamtown Hookah, which moved from around the corner.
Yeah, I asked Ben to present this, because this bodes well for downtown Scranton. I mean, we're in a pandemic, we signed up a new restaurant, Steamtown Hookah, the furniture store, we have one vacancy, and I think if we were able to improve the old Colosseum space a little bit, to upgrade it and get it more ready, it's really kind of vacant now. We were able to clean it out last year, but I think there's been interest, and that's a positive sign, I think, for Scranton and for downtown. So, we're actually excited and wanted to share this news, because a lot of businesses aren't doing that well. Our tenants are current on their rent, and they seem to be doing fine, so I thought it was just important to share.
That's great news. The former Colosseum, is there any interest? Have you, I know that you cleaned it out, and it has to be up there?
We've showed it a couple times, but nothing serious. I think the cost is just scaring people away, because it is a pretty big space, it's about 4,000 to 5,000 square feet, so you need to use, need that much space, and then the cost to renovate that, we really, we really had to gut the whole space, and so there really isn't anything in there but a concrete floor and frame walls.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask specifically why that space hasn't been filled in so long?
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to need, it's going to need some work. But we're not, you know, we're not opposed to helping a tenant go in there if we had the dollars to do that, so, which was what we did with the Bartieri space, we shared in the upgrades of the space, we did that with the Connell space, and I think that's really the only way to try to attract some folks, is to share in the upgrade of the tenant improvements. So, we'd like to do the same here, but it's a matter of dollars available.
And finally, I'm pleased to note that Comics on the Green extended for a new term as well, this past spring. So, before I hand it over to Dave, I want to share a brief overview of our recent year-to-date financials. We report revenue worse than budget by $36,000, however, our expenses were better than budget by $134,000. So, our net operating income through September 2021 was better than budget by nearly $99,000.
That's the good news. And a little bit more detail on that, this is the summary that we share with you really every quarter. These are numbers through September, where the first three columns are the current month, the center three columns are year-to-date through September, and the 2021 budget is on the far right. The good news here for September, through September, for this month of September, is that every line item on the revenue side has beat budget. This is the first month in 2021 where we could say that, and that's true for transient parking, that's true for even meter parking, not by a lot, but meter parking. So, that's the positive news. I think for the year, on the, well, on the expense side, our expenses are worse than budget this month, that's mostly due to cash flow and timing of payments. Last month, cash was tight, so we had to double up on some payments for this month, so we were off-budget for this month. But overall, on the expense side, we're doing good against budget, we're better than budget by $134,000.
And what do you attribute that to?
The expenses?
Yes.
Mostly staffing. We really didn't fill open positions early in the year, we let go of an enforcement officer because we just had no traffic on the street, and we just brought that officer back on later, only most, only most recently in this year. So, it's mostly to the staffing changes. We also, and this will resonate when we, when we talk about the 2022 budget, which we don't have for you, we're working on that now, a lot of our vendors worked with us during 2020 and 2021, and negotiated better terms for the year. So, these are contractors, these are service providers for a lot of our electronics and our equipment that we have in the garages and the on-street system. I mean, everybody was trying to help each other where they could, and we were good customers, and so they worked with us. Everybody's going to want to go back to regular rates in 2022, so that's not going to help a whole lot when we put together the budget, which we're doing now, but that attributes to some of this. But year-to-date, even though September was a good month, the year-to-date numbers are still pretty much on budget, except for transient and for our on-street revenue. The folks that are parking on-street just aren't coming back as quickly as we would have liked. You know, overall, we're only $36,000 off-budget, but most of that is in the transient and the on-street line items. Now, as a reminder, well, maybe I'll show you this next slide, well, let me stay here for a minute. If you look on the far-right budget, our NOI, which is dollars to pay debt service, is $1,318,000. That's what we budgeted. Our debt service is $1,005,000 for the A Bonds, $688,000 for the B and C Bonds. So, we don't, we didn't project having enough dollars to make our debt payments for 2021. We knew that going in. So, even though we're doing good against budget, we projected well in our saving on expenses, we still are not going to have enough money to pay our debt service payments. We knew that going in, we've been paying those debt service payments with reserves that we set aside over the past few years, and as I'll talk about in a little bit, we're working with our bondholders to try to negotiate some terms for 2022 and beyond that'll help us make up for the losses over the past couple years. And that's, that's obviously in the works, in the works right now.
And Dave, how long does, I think we talked about this the last time, but how long do the reserves keep you going for in terms of the debt payments?
We were able to make our July payment, but we will not be able to make our January payment. So, our bondholders are aware of that, and we expect to be in front of them, jumping ahead here a little bit, but we expect to be in front of them in the next 30 to 45 days with a plan, and start those conversations. We talk to them every month, they're aware of our situation, they're aware of our performance, they know that we're out of reserves, and that we need to start talking about a restructure that's going to hopefully position us for the long term.
Okay. Thank you.
This is just, these numbers aren't, are looking pretty much, going to look, we think, look pretty much the same for the rest of the year. We think October, November, December are going to be on budget, so we expect to finish a little bit below budget on the revenue side, $33,000, and we expect to finish better than expenses on the, on the expense side by about $160,000. So, we think we'll do better than budget by about $126,000. You know, again, that's a budget that we knew we were going to be short, but nonetheless, I think the team did a good job of putting together a budget that we're actually meeting now, and we understand what it costs to run. So, I wanted to show you this slide, because as things are getting better, we're using 2019 as the benchmark. That was the year that we went in, we raised rates according to the agreement that we had in 2016, according to that schedule. We actually did not raise the monthly rate to the level that we were allowed to, because we didn't feel we need to. If you remember, we were able to go to $100, we went to 92, because we felt things were fine, going well, and we didn't really need to go that high. So, the first three months of 2020 were actually good. So, I wanted to just show you this, so that we can compare going forward, how 2020 looked against 2019, and then how 2021 is shaping up against 2021, to see what the trend is, because we'll use this as a basis for putting together our 2022 budget. If you look at 2019 compared to 2020, it was really pretty ugly. On the monthly, we did $1,006,000 in 2019, we did $1,003,000 in 2020, 25% less. On transient parking, 2019, we did 806,000, in 2020, we only did 421,000, that's parkers in the garages. That's almost half of what 2019 numbers. The other numbers that are more, are significant are the meter numbers. The parking meter, we did $933,000 in 2019, 2020, we did 637,000, off by almost 46%. Those are pretty significant drops in revenue, and even though we were able to do some things with expenses, it really wasn't going to come close to that. So, now if you look at 2021 against 2020, right, 2020 was a terrible year, we felt like things were going to come back, we start to see things getting better, we're about the same on monthlies. I thought that we would actually be better, and more folks would start to come back in, on the monthly side, it has not yet happened. On the transient side, again, we got 25% better. 2021 was 421, or 20 was 420, in 2020, we were at 421. In 2021, we were up to 560, a 25% better year over year. Again, better on validations, better on our rents, Ben talked about our tenants and how well we're doing in keeping our spaces occupied. On the parking meters, you know, again, $771,000 in 2021, better by about 17% from the year prior. The important thing now for us is to what, nobody has a crystal ball, but where's 2022, 23, 24 going to be? If you look at 2021 compared to 2019, that's likely what it's going to be like our benchmark for trying to move forward. We think things are going to get better, we think they're just going to get better slowly, we think 2022 will not be as good as 2019, and we'll gauge that as it goes. We're hoping that by 2023, 2024, we'll be close back to those numbers. Now, for us, of course, expenses are expenses, we'll do the best we can to control them. I think we operate a pretty efficient operation. The key for us will be to work with our bondholders and the city to try to find ways to mitigate the, mitigate the negotiations with our, with our bondholders. And I say the city, because when we put the team together, everything's on the table. We cannot change rates, one way or the other, up or down, without this body and the Parking Authority approving it. When we put the transaction together in 2016, that rate structure was set out for 45 years, right? The debt service was tied to that rate structure, we really didn't have a lot of great information going in, so we set that out, and it was sort of a, it was a model, and this is the way it was going to operate. Our job was to operate it efficiently, improve, upgrade, operate it professionally, and make the debt service payments based on that schedule of, of, of payments, on the rate schedule. Now that we know we have more information, pandemic aside, everything's on the table. So, the team includes CDPS, Walker Consultants, which is a team of folks who were involved originally, they, some of those folks work for Desmond, a guy by the name Eric Hager, are helping us now run financial models, along with our underwriter, Citigroup, and the city's advisor, PFM, and then along with the city in Scranton, and the Parking Authority, look at those models, look at different rate structures that might make some sense for the long term for Scranton, and then when I say that, the things that I'm talking about are, maybe there's an adjustment between the transient parking rates in the garages and the on-street rates. I mean, we think those rates are a little bit too, we'd like to see those rates maybe even flipped possibly, so that we can push more people in the garages and have more parkers, parking available on the street. Does that work economically? Is there enough activity for that to make sense? That's what we're working with our parking consultant on. And the rate increases, when we set out rate, the rates, we had increases in periods of time over the course of the next 45 years. Are those sustainable? Are those rates going to get too expensive and hurt the economic development of downtown? It's one of the reasons we wanted the city and the Parking Authority at the table to have this conversation, because as we talk to our bondholders, if there's a way that we can come together to figure out the best way to structure this financing, I look at this as, this pandemic was terrible, but maybe an opportunity, and we'll just have to see how this goes over the next six months or so.
That's great.
And that, I think, is all I have. So, we'll keep you posted. I think this next quarter will be an important one for us. And we'll, we'll report back in January, once we put the bodies together, and we'll probably have some preliminary things to talk about when it comes to meeting with our bondholders.
Thank you. Mr. Trevissani, one of the things that we've talked about before here was the fact that we may be leaving money on the table in terms of habitual offenders of, you know, not paying parking citations and paying the parking meters. So, one of the things that you had mentioned, and there was a newspaper story about it months and months ago, was a type of contraption, I think you called it a barnacle.
Yeah, we refer to that as the process of decriminalizing a parking violation. It's been done successfully in other cities, where the adjudication of a parking violation doesn't go through the magistrate's office, but it goes through a local body, say like the Parking Authority, which is what we were proposing in the conversations we were having, was that, that if someone gets a ticket and they get multiple tickets, that goes to the magistrate currently. The magistrate then issues a warrant, and we collect very little of those dollars. We think the process works much better, and it, and it's been proven in other cities, that if that's not a criminal offense, it's a civil offense, then you don't need to go to the magistrate. Then if someone gets multiple tickets and they don't pay, then we would be able to put in a mobilization device on their car, formerly called a boot, that's a little bit, just what we're talking about is something different. And these are only for folks who have multiple violations, right? If we, we're not looking to issue tickets, that's sometimes what the folks are looked at, but what we're looking for is folks who just pay for what they use, and if they get tickets, and they continue as violators, and they don't pay, then that would allow us to immobilize the car, and then the local adjudicator would then handle folks who want to make a claim against a ticket, or fight a ticket, for example. So, it wouldn't go through, take the pressure off the magistrate, and that would be handled through someone at the Parking Authority. I mean, that's kind of a, you know, a long description of what we're talking about, but it's really something that's important for us to be able to have teeth to our enforcement, because if otherwise, folks are getting tickets and not paying them, it really hurts our ability to collect revenue.
So, the last time we had spoke, I know that you said you were in contact with the city law department, because we would need to vote on legislation, you know, granting the authority to do this.
Yep.
Are they any farther along in that process?
Yeah, the project's just been a little bit slow. I think we're, we're working through the details of, with the Parking Authority right now, and the city administration, to try to come to some final terms that we could then bring, bring to this body. I think we're making a lot of progress, and then things, things slowed for a bit. Some of the things that we're talking about is, you know, how many tickets before someone has to have their car mobilized, or is there going to be an amnesty program? And I think I could say, matter-of-factly, that they will. So, if somebody has a lot of outstanding tickets, we're not expecting you to pay them all up, or that we're going to boot your car. We'll probably give, you know, this is something we'll have to work through with the city and the Parking Authority team, is that if you pay within, you give you so many days or a discount, or so many, so many will be forgiven. I think that we need to work through those details, because we don't want to be just the bad guys, we just want to start fresh with the program that works, but give people a period of time to either pay their tickets or forgive some of them, and those are the details that we're talking about.
Right, okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a quick one. So, it's been brought to my attention that, you know, parking, you have to pay for parking until 5 o'clock, right? So, but the machine, or the meter still accept money. So, with that said, why don't they just shut off? I don't know if that, and secondly, so how is that money tracked? Is that just added, or is it tracked separately, or does this occur a lot? Or is there any way you can find out?
I'm sorry, the money that...
Okay, say it's 5 o'clock, right?
Yep.
And, or say it's quarter after 5:00.
Yep.
And I put money in the machine, it's going to take it.
Yes.
And so, does that happen a lot? Is that tracked differently?
No, it's not tracked differently. I don't, I mean, we could, we could, you know, they're pretty sophisticated, so we can run a report to see how many people pay after 5:00. But you're right, the meters, it's free after 5:00, so folks don't have to pay. I mean, some folks may pay because they don't know, that's unfortunate, we're not, we're not looking for people to pay, it's free. But we could run a report to see how many people pay, so, but, but we, we want people to know that it's free. I mean, the people come downtown, and they want to go to restaurants, and we want them to come downtown. So, but I don't have an answer to that specifically, but we can certainly run a report, because the information's collected.
Right, someone came to me with, posed that question to me, so I'm just relaying it to you. Yeah, I'd like that information.
Okay, let's make a point to run that report, sure.
Or is there some way on the, on the meter to alert the park, the person parking that, hey, guess what, it's, it's, it's...
Yeah, that's something we can, we can probably make pop up on the screen, to say, you don't have to pay, it's 5:00.
I don't know how much this occurs, how often this occurs, so just... I don't know how much this occur, how, how often this occurs, so just let me know if, if you can.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. That's a good point. I mean, we're not, we're not trying to fool people into paying. I think we can either let folks know more proactively, or, um, yeah, 'cause the machines don't shut off. I don't know that that's a thing, but, but we could probably do something to let people know if they approach a machine. Something we can look at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I previously asked about, uh, the meters that aren't functioning properly and, um, the amount of meters that need to be, um, you know, maintained or fixed, um, on a daily basis. And I believe, uh, you had given us a percentage in the, in the past. Do you happen to have that information available to you now? Like, has that improved or not improved? Like, are they still breaking down as often as they were? That's what I'm looking for.
I think they're pretty reliable. I think that, that we do have breakdowns, and we, we, we are notified when there's a breakdown, and, and usually it's, it's fixed, you know, pretty quickly, 'cause it's mostly electronics. I think, I think one of the things that I wanna let folks know is that sometimes folks think the machine isn't working, but they're, they're just not using it properly. And that's something that I think is an issue, and hopefully we'll get better over time. One of the examples that we've heard is, and when you go to a machine, it says, "You have to put your license plate number in first before you can do anything", right? A lot of times when people, what happens is folks go up to the machine and they start putting quarters in. And then the machine won't do anything, because it won't accept your quarters, because, and so they think it's broken. And then they'll report that it's broken. But then when we go out to the machine, it's really not broken, it's just that, that the individual didn't put their license plate in first. That's the first thing they'll have to do. So, that's a, that's a common complaint that we have, that the machine's broken, but it's not, but the, the folks weren't just reading the machine and using it properly. And that's a challenge. I know these are new, and folks are still getting used to them a little bit. But, um, but I, I think the breakdowns are actually infrequent. I, I know, well, I do know that our phone system was down, or ABM's phone system was down the past day, so people haven't been able to call us. So, if you've gotten those calls, I apologize. The phone systems have been down in the office, and it has to do with our firewall, and I'm hopeful they'll be up tomorrow.
You know what I've noticed, Dave? And this is, I haven't really heard this from anyone, but just in my experience parking downtown and using the parking meter, and I can only imagine what it would be like for someone who's elderly. When you go to try to put in your license plate, if you go to hit the letter A, sometimes it does not register, and then when you, it, it's hard to put your license plate in sometimes. I think that's where the frustration is, and if, especially if it's really bright out, it's almost impossible to see the screen.
Yeah.
So, is there any way maybe in the future that there could be some sort of upgrade to that? It's just hard to, to plug the, the numbers in.
We, we, we could look at that. If the touchscreen is getting more desensitized over time and, and needs to be upgraded, that's something that we'll look at. I, I know that we have had those complaints too, that folks are, um, put in the wrong license plate, and if they, but we don't wanna get folks to get tickets for that reason. That's a mistake. We, that's, we, we don't want that person to pay for that ticket. But unfortunately, if they do it, if they put their license plate in wrong, and then they get a ticket, which they would, then there's a process for them to go, uh, challenge that ticket, and, and it's easy for us to see. If you press A instead of B, it's easy for us to tell, and then we, we allow that ticket to go away. But if it's a totally different number, then of course, we're, we're, it's still a ticket. But most times, it's one letter off, and that's not a ticket. But to your point, I, I think we'll look into that, and we'll, we'll, we'll talk to the, the technical team to see, is there a timeframe where we need to be looking at these screens to make sure that they're responsive?
Right. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? We have about eight minutes left.
Yeah, so, um, one twenty-eight million was used for the on-street system, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, at this point in time, we have one hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars in excess funds. Is there any stipulations on how these funds could be used?
Just for the on-street system. So, what we used the money for was to buy the kiosks themselves, the installation of the kiosks, you know, the service package, the, the cars, the, the license plate technology that's on the cars, the handhelds, all of that was part of the system that was purchased. Um, and we don't, we don't see a need for buying more of that equipment anytime soon, so that's, that's the balance. I mean, we could certainly just either give it back to the city, leave it, leave it there in case something breaks that we need to replace, or it can be repurposed to something else. Could be repurposed to a storefront for upgrading center stations, just saying.
Yeah, yeah, that was the example you gave. Is, is there gonna be another point in time when we'll see excess funds like this, or is this just?
No, this is, this was a, this was really a one-time investment. We, we, we think these, these kiosks will last a good ten years, so we're, we, we don't see a need to, and we bought extra, so that we, if one breaks down, we have, we have extra. Um, and a lot of it is technology, so we don't have anything in the, you know, if it needs a repair, that's in our operating budget. We, this is capital money, so...
That's where I was going. I didn't know for every so many years, you, you'd do something similar to this, where you upgrade the system?
Probably not for a little while. We will. Probably not for a little while, though.
All right. I guess, I guess I should ask, do you see it feasible to put this money towards maybe a reduction in rates over a certain amount of years, anything like that? Or would that not be feasible?
All, all, yeah, we, look, as you saw, we could certainly use the money. That's a, not a lot, but it's certainly, we, 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 we'd more than happy to make suggestions. I mean, it could go to the operation, it can go to a capital item, it could come back into the system just to cup, cup cover costs. Um, we're open. But that's your call. It's, it's, uh, it was dedicated to the on-street system and its excess money.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Uh, just one final question, comment, and we'll wrap it up. I read, uh, in, you, you went and presented this information to the Parking Authority Board a few weeks ago, correct?
Yes.
And I think two of the members of the Parking Authority Board had complained about the rates, downtown business owners, and we get complaints about them all the time. Um, is it realistic, though, Dave? Now, I, I was involved in this since two thousand fourteen. I saw the way that this place was run before you guys took over. It was a, saying it was a disaster is an understatement by a lot. But is it realistic for people to think that we're going to see some magical reduction, major reduction in rates? We see the finances, we see the wrench that was thrown in it by the pandemic. Is it realistic to think that over the next few years, rates are going to be reduced?
Uh, no, I, I don't think so. Um, when, when we set the rates originally, we looked at, you know, northeast Pennsylvania, we looked at the, we looked at the competition in the surrounding areas, and I, I think that our rates are in that range. They may be on the higher end on the on-street, two dollars an hour, but I think the rest of the rates are comparable. We do really believe that. So, you know, my discussions with, you know, with the city has been, if you wanna drive business downtown, you know, you might wanna be lower than the rest of the world. But then, but then that means you gotta lower your debt payments, because you can't, you still gotta pay the loan back. So, that's really what it comes down to. The things that we would like to see, that we think would help Scranton economic development long-term, is looking at the, the ratio between the rates for going in the garage versus the rates that are on the street. We believe it's better to have lower rates to encourage people to go into the garages, and then if you wanna premium spot, and you wanna park right in front of where you wanna go, then you should pay the premium price. But get the carts off the streets in the garages, and then those folks who want the premium spot, and they're okay paying for that, and that would help revenue. But there's gonna be a, you know, there's a cost to that, and that, and, and that's what we're looking at now. And then the rate increases over time. But to your point, no, I don't see it's possible, and I don't think our bondholders would, you know, allow it without some deep subsidy coming from someplace. I mean, we're not out of line with the rest of the market area. We're in line.
Right. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, uh, I remember the way that it was run, and it was financially mismanaged. So, I would hate to get back to a position where we're doing things that we're not gonna be able to meet those bond payments and, and things like that. Uh, and the numbers that you presented tonight from two thousand nineteen, we were moving in a really good direction.
We really were.
And then, just like everyone else across the country, I don't care how well they were doing, a wrench is thrown in it from the pandemic. So, but I will say that I do think that we're continuing to, to move in, in, in a good place here, uh, with, with you.
I agree. I, I think if there's adjustments, it may be, again, on-street versus off-street, looking at some of the increases over time, how does that look? And then what does the bondholder think of all that? Because they're owed money that we can't pay them right now, and what are their, what is their reaction gonna be to changing rates, and will that work out or not? So, I think we have a ways to go, but over the next six months, we'll, we'll tell a lot.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much. I appreciate the quarterly update. Uh, I do know that one of our regular speakers, Ms. Jeffries, had posed a few questions that you did answer, so we will get those answers to her. We really appreciate the, the quick response. And, uh, we thank you, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
We'll start our regular meeting in two minutes, everybody, at six-thirty. Thank you.
Public meeting, two order. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away recently in our community. Let us also take a moment of silence for all of the people in our community, country, and around the world who continue to suffer and feel the effects from the coronavirus.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McCandry?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A. Agenda for the City Planning Commission meeting held October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Three B. Check received from Harrison House Personal Care Home dated October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of five hundred dollars, which is payment in lieu of taxes. Three C. Check received from Lutherwood Senior Housing LLC dated October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of six thousand dollars, which is in payment of, in lieu of taxes. Three D. Overtime review for all departments as provided by City Controller dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, for the period January to October, two thousand twenty-one.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple. Um, first, just a reminder that, uh, for anyone that, after yesterday, garbage is a day behind this week, and then it will also be a day behind next week if your garbage is picked up Thursday or Friday because of Veterans Day. Um, and also, the International Association of Machinists Local twenty-three oh five, the Scranton DPW workers are hosting a Thanksgiving food drive. Um, all donations will benefit families in our community through Little Sisters of the Poor. Uh, drop-off dates are eleventh, or November thirteenth and fourteenth, and the twentieth and twenty-first. Um, at the, at, uh, the New York Park Pool across from the pool entrance. Uh, they're looking for canned goods, boxed, boxed foods, instant potatoes and gravy packets, pasta sauce, pie shells, et cetera. So, please, uh, support our DPW Workers Union Thanksgiving Food Drive.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple. So, uh, I spoke to Mr. Waldenberg about this before the meeting, but I'm just gonna be, uh, actually, 'cause I, I don't know the answer to this, and maybe someone here knows. If not, of course, you're gonna send correspondence. So, this comes from a resident that lives near Marywood, Marywood, where parking, uh, permit parking is permitted, okay? Currently, residents are allowed three, uh, residence parking permits and one visitor pass. This lady has a driveway to park, but I have five children who often visit. Could, um, you possibly look into, see if residents can, you know, get four passes that suit them, meaning, for example, I would need four visitor passes instead, instead of the reverse. Um, if you could please send that forward, you know, it's gonna answer this.
I'll take care of that tomorrow morning, sir.
Thank you very much. And then, Thursday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-one, um, there's a car safety, car seat safety check, and no appointment necessary. Commonwealth Health EMS Training Center, from two to four P M., on One Oakwood Drive, Scranton, PA. For any more information, you can call the Traffic Injury Prevention Program number at five seven zero four seven one three zero two six. Then also, this actually started last week, so, um, Friends of the Poor will be distributing winter coats at their, at their warehouse on two forty East Elm Street. Every Wednesday and Thursday, coats will be distributed outside in the front parking lot. All right? And this is a really, this is a fantastic piece of news that I, I got, and I wanna share it with everybody. So, um, McDonald's and Mueller family, uh, that owns the majority of McDonald's all around here, is proud to announce our partnership with Lackawanna College to offer free tuition to all employees. No, no cost degree is available to all employees who average at least sixteen hours per week and attend Lackawanna College part-time or full-time after ninety days of employment. I know my students will, will definitely take advantage of this, 'cause a lot of them, uh, do, uh, carry on their education over there in their culinary program. But this is a great way to entice them, 'cause everybody's complaining about they don't have any workers, so this is a nice little benefit. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, um, I have one, uh, one more thing to add. Uh, there's going to be a food pantry for veterans. Actually, um, it's gonna be every Friday from eleven A M. to one P M., held at the VFW on Rockwell Avenue. That's, uh, two, twenty-two ninety-one Rockwell Avenue. And, uh, it's available for, uh, veterans or families and widows of veterans. Um, they don't, they don't need to write any sort of, um, financial, uh, or income information in order to, uh, receive the food. Uh, they do have to register on their initial visit. Um, they should bring, uh, with them, um, like their military, military I D., just to confirm that, uh, they are a veteran. And, um, yeah, uh, so, that'll be, uh, that's starting this month.
Thank you. Anyone else? Frank?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. Uh, welcome, everyone, tonight. Uh, there's several speakers listed on the sheet here. Before I call up the first speaker, just a reminder, uh, in your comments, uh, when you come up, please state your, your name for the record, uh, clearly for our stenographer. Uh, also, please make sure, according to the rules of council, that you keep your comments to agenda items or, uh, anything related to city business. First speaker is
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident. Um, this morning, on my way to the cathedral at five fifteen A M., I had a walk down Penn Avenue, and I passed by a homeless person sleeping, uh, on the street next to my mother's table. It occurs to me that the temperature's starting to get very cold at night. I think for the next week, it's gonna go down into the twenties. Remember how we used to have this county thing called Cold Blue? Uh, is, is this program still in effect, and is the city looking towards taking care of our homeless? Because this is a sudden drop in temperature.
That I don't know. Gerard Hetman, when he was the outreach coordinator, as you remember, used to come and update us on that. But, uh, we, we'll look into it. I, I don't know off the top of my head if they're still running that program.
Yeah, but we were entering a very cold period now, and it's, it's sudden turn, and, um, you know, you overlay the pandemic on top of the cold weather, and I, I think we have a, if not a legal, at least a moral obligation to be looking out for the benefit of those people. So, I just ask if you would look at that. Uh, speaking of looking at things, where's my audit?
We don't have it yet, unfortunately.
All I want for Christmas is the twenty-twenty audit.
Me too. It's on my, it's number one on my list.
Yes, and also for Christmas, it would be nice to get the rest of those, uh, union contracts posted on the website. I'm still looking. Um, I saw in your back, backup, uh, material for this, this meeting tonight, uh, the overtime through October, and the numbers are still going up. Uh, and I understand there are probably some valid reasons for that, but it, it points to, uh, preparations for the twenty-twenty-two budget. So, my question is, is you have a schedule for the mayor and her department heads appearing in caucus to discuss budget issues?
Yes, I'm actually gonna announce it tonight. Uh, it'll occur the week of the sixteenth, so we're gonna do it on Tuesday and Thursday for about three weeks in a row, and we'll invite, and, and they've already agreed to it. Um, so they'll come in, we'll have a public caucus with them, and, uh, they'll be able to present their departmental budgets to us, and we'll be able to ask questions, and, you know, they'll, they'll have to justify any increase or any new positions.
Yeah, I, I mean, overtime is obviously one of the issues, and... Yeah, I mean, overtime is obviously one of the issues, and I think, looking very carefully at any, any new personnel being brought on board, job descriptions, and the budgets, of course, for IT and Lips would be particularly interesting. Will you, will that be in the legals in the paper?
Yeah, I'm actually going to make a motion tonight in fifth order to have Mr. Waldenberg play, though, I think there'll be two ads placed in the newspaper with a listing of the dates, the times, and the department heads who will be coming in.
Okay.
And that'll be televised on ECTV.
Got that, Jim? Okey-dokey. As I was walking here tonight, I still see this sign outside of the Linden parking garage prohibiting Chevrolet bolts. You know, I don't know if you saw the article in the paper. The Chevrolet bolt has a problem with its battery. They tend to catch fire, so they're all being recalled. So apparently, in all the city garages, ABM did not mention this, Chevrolet bolts are prohibited until the recall is completed. I find that very interesting, because I think the entire electric vehicle industry has an issue with their batteries. They're hardly been perfected. But, you know, this is the electric city, and I'm curious to see what kind of strategic vision the administration has for converting from a city used to gasoline-powered and diesel-powered vehicles, transitioning in 10, 20 years down the road towards a country which supposedly is going to be primarily either hybrid or all-electric vehicles. But let's hope we have no battery fires in any of the garages. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Waldenberg, if you can check on the Code Blue, I'm interested in that as well.
I will, Mr. Gahn.
And also on the union contracts, Mr. Waldenberg, on the website.
Yes, sir.
Next speaker is Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. First thing, got here tonight, and I realized I forgot a mask. So first of all, I think, Council, it's because of you that we have to wear masks. I think you should supply them, in case people forget. Sometimes people forget things. I almost had to go home, but on the way to my car, Mr. Coyne, I saw him, and luckily, he had some extras. So thanks to him, or else I would have had to make a special trip home. I think Council should supply it to people. Next thing, first thing I wanted to say is, congratulations to all the people who won their elections yesterday, and I just hope they do a good job. Okay, we're coming up on budget time, and here's my annual rant of what I call the illegal garbage fee. I've been talking about this for 19 years now, since I've been coming here. We pay our property taxes to have our garbage collected. I think it's illegal to charge another tax. And for years, prior councils told me, oh, it's not a tax, it's a fee. Well, this year, I was proven right, because you can't put a fee in with property taxes. And the garbage tax was put in with the property taxes. So now we're being taxed twice to get our garbage collected. So I hope in this budget, the council looks to change something. Either do away with it altogether, or at least put it back to the $178 that it was a number of years ago, before it went up to 300. Because a lot of people like myself, who are senior citizens, were taxed to the limit. I'm retired now, but I still have to work part-time to pay taxes and other bills. People my age, the gentleman I work with, he's 76, and he's still working. People that you shouldn't have to work at that age to make ends meet. It's just not right. And, well, at least one thing, thanks to President Biden, we're going to pretty good raise on our social security next year. This year, my raise on my social security was $13 a month. You could barely do anything with that. Now, next year, it's going to be 92. That's, that's a pretty good raise, going from 13 to 92. I could pay a bill with that. So thanks again to President Biden. That was his campaign promise, and he's keeping it. He said he was going to take care of the seniors, and he's doing it. So I hope Council considers doing something with that garbage fee, garbage tax, I'm sorry. Next thing, before I went to my job last Friday morning, I'm looking out my door, saw a DPW supervisor pickup truck parked on a corner across from me. I see a guy spray painting lines on the street. I went out, and I said, what are you doing? Very nice man. He told me something. Going to take care of the whole corner. We're going to raise the curbs that aren't up high enough. We're going to take care of your corner. I said, oh, that's great. I said, I've been going to Council for a couple times, and hopefully, what I said is why you're here. Really nice man. He said, oh, he said, tell them the Latino supervisor was here to do it. And I said, well, Latino and Italian. He was a really nice guy, and I'm glad he was there. He said, well, I can't give a date, but we're going to do it before the real cold weather starts, so. That's, I really appreciate it. They're doing more than I asked for. They're doing the whole corner, so everybody's house, so. So that's really good. It'll really be good for the neighborhood. But again, like I said last week, I don't know why we have blacktop curbs. Everybody should have concrete curbs. I don't know who made that decision, just to make that area tri-park blacktop. Well, that's all I have tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Hello, Council.
Good evening.
So I didn't vote for any of y'all. Congratulate everyone. And I'm not mad, I'm sort of disappointed. Yeah, I think, I think you could almost say that the mayor didn't have any opposition in this. If she ran against Mary Walsh, I think it would have been a different result. As usual, I don't know what I'm talking about, but I have a question, really. Why can't they put some solar panels for that electric city light? They're paying $6,000 a year rent. I have no idea what they cost, but they shouldn't cost that much.
Yeah, that would have to be, those solar panels cost money, too, so that would have to be an investment made by whoever owns the building.
It seems to me it'd be, you know, I don't know what, how long that lights out, six, eight hours, how much electricity they need. Well, just a passing thought, anyway. When I walk my dog three, four times a day, I think of all these things to kill time. And now I go to talk about the gentleman, Roseanne, that got killed in front of my house, Mr. Mini Cozy. Mr. Roland says it was an accident. It was no accident whatsoever, none. The man was standing about two feet from the curb waiting to cross the street. The car that hit him was going over twice the speed limit. He never put his brakes on. There's not a single skid mark. After he hit the poor guy, he went about 100 feet up the street before he stopped. He should have been taken to jail immediately for manslaughter or something. This case isn't going to be swept under the rug like Mr. Benkey's, I hope, the gentleman that got killed in Wyoming a couple years ago. The people that run over him didn't even send $10 for his funeral. He was buried by Keystone Mission. Roseanne's, Roseanne's brother grew up with Mr. Mini Cozy. That's how she knows him for probably 15 years. If this was a six- or eight-year-old, it would be different. It would have been handled different. They would have cared. They don't seem to have any interest in this. And one other thing, I saw the three grants for West Side. Now that the election's over, maybe you could get some two-by-fours for the benches over at Western Park. You know, my neighborhood is so bad, they raised my insurance, like I said, and you give three grants to West Side. That doesn't make sense. You know my neighborhood is going to pot, like I said, there are three houses with just inches from me with junk cars all over the place. I don't know who's supposed to take care of it in the Leisling Bureau, but they ought to be fired. It's a shame. It's a shame what's happened to North Side, up and down the streets. The whole place is a mess. But I have seen a street sweeper a few months ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next speaker is David Dobson.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton, taxpayer. That announcement about the Chevy Bolt, that's also Volvo, Honda, several others. And I spent my whole life working on, in transportation, my whole work life. Fortunately, I don't have to do that anymore. But I would recommend that the government start pushing hybrids, and some of these vehicles that the car companies are handing out to politicians, not necessarily from Scranton or formerly, but they're an insult. You know, an electric Humvee, it takes way more energy to push a Humvee around, and Jeeps, giant Jeeps, and, I mean, it's just kind of sickening. I mean, what am I supposed to do with our narrow city streets? Pull over, raise the flag and salute, I guess? You know, we're looking for efficiency here, and I would think that a hybrid would be more efficient than one of those clunkers, at any rate. Congratulations to everybody that won. Hopefully, we can all get along, and a little disappointment. It seems like here and all over the country, a lot of voters that qualified to vote haven't. If you're out in TV land and listening, next time, get out to vote, and hopefully, inform yourself on the issues before you do. Don't get sucked in by silly stuff like racial things or whatever for lawyers. That was a, that course was for lawyers, law students. Televisions in our courts, they're starting to pile up. Now, several months ago, they stopped taking televisions in down at the recycling center. I would be glad to pay, but I have three of them that are defunct, you know? And people are putting them out in the courts. I started walking the doggy a couple blocks and with my wacky ankle, and it's just, they're starting to pile up. I'm seeing them here and there, and maybe after Christmas, there'll be exponentially more when everybody goes out spending their money, if they can get it. Now, on taxes, last week, I spoke a little bit about Scranton taxes, and here's some institutions that don't pay any taxes in Scranton. General Dynamics, that's the former Chamberlain down there, state offices, county offices, federal courthouse. The county occupies at least two and a half city blocks in downtown. And the rural suburb hospitals are closing at an alarming rate. So then we have people living on the outskirts coming to Scranton to our hospitals, and I'm all for hospitals. But it would be nice if someday the state would start to compensate these cities that have to take in all these tax exempts, and they might have to be, they might need a little push. I was very enthused about that suit, and I'm disappointed that Scranton wasn't part of it, the school district, to at least get compensated for the low-wage earners and people that are. And once again, COVID, they're not announcing the death toll anymore. And yesterday, I got my, or Monday, might have been yesterday, my third vaccination. So get down there, I'm not dead. You can see me, you know? I'm not drying up into a ball or anything. And it's really important that people get vaccinated, because we're never going to get out from under this. It's, we should be producing vaccinations for the whole world, because it's just going to come back like a boomerang. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. That exhaust is sign-in chief for this evening. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the council?
Tom Coyne, Manuka. First of all, we've had a bunch of conversation here about the electric cars and the parking garages. Electric cars are like a lot of things, a fad. They have limited range, and a lot of people put them, put them forth as the new green technology. But when you take a look further down the line for electric vehicles, electric vehicles use heavy metals, and the batteries do not last that long. So you may not be putting pollution out in the air locally from that car, but over a short period of time, roughly about 10 years, the battery systems need to be replaced. Those battery systems have a lot of toxic heavy metals in them, and yes, we are going to be dumping and dealing with, instead of toxins going into the air, we'll deal more with toxins that are heavy metals that are going to be storehouse, storehouse somewhere until they reuse some of those battery parts, or they get rid of the chemicals by putting them in dumps or anywhere else. The other fraud about electric vehicles is, oh, they're clean burning. No, they're not. Wind power and, wind power and other solar power is great, but it is not the majority of what's powering those electric vehicles. What electric vehicles are at this point is, the pollution is not in my backyard. The pollution is not something that I say, whether it's coal-fired electric or oil-electric, as long as the generation of electricity is from a pollution source, even though you're not seeing it coming out of the back of the car, it's just coming out of a facility that's producing the electricity. I would rather see hybrid cars. If the city is going to consider it in the future, I would rather see propane or natural gas vehicles, as most larger cities have gone to, because natural gas is readily available, it's clean burning, and it actually lasts for a longer period of time. That's why bus, large buses in a lot of metro centers use natural gas as fuel for vehicles rather than electric. Electric at this time is impractical, and the batteries are a problem. Moving on to trash, I had inquired last week whether or not the trash fee was put into a separate interest-bearing account. Do we know if there is at this point?
We're looking into that. That question has come up before, so Mr. Waldenberg is looking into it.
The trash fee has been put in place for a long period of time. I'm kind of startled that we don't know whether or not that special account is in place.
Well, as I mentioned to you last week, I believe it is, but we're just waiting for confirmation on that.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just surprised that since 2018, it was brought up in a lawsuit that no one actually knows.
that no one actually knows whether or not that. I would figure that when that got brought up, someone would go out there and go, is this actually put into a special account? And if it's not, I'm curious to know which of the laws that council has passed does city government not have to obey? It's part of the laws and ordinance that this was set forth when it was put through, that the money was being put into a special account? If it's not being put into a special account as the law is signed, I'd like to know which city laws are optional. Out of the stuff that the city and the mayor signs, which laws does the city not have to obey that have been put on the books? Is there a special exception for the city where the city does not have to follow policy, even of its law, just because it doesn't want to? I know that's a little harsh in saying it in that terms, but if I'm required to put an escrow account up for money that I take in, I can't spend that on my own, on my own expenses because I'm taking away from funds that are specifically earmarked. In putting through the garbage fee, these were specifically earmarked only to be spent on costs for waste management. And without having a separate account, it makes it extremely difficult to be able to audit exactly where those expenses are being spent on. Thank you.
And you know that that exact thing that you're speaking of is now being litigated between the city and several parties.
I, I do know that, but I also have to look at it that we cannot leave the city, not be financially clear for three or four years, to hide behind lack of clarity because there's a litigation going on. We're not asking for details on the litigation, we're asking whether or not the city is complying to the law. And it's financial data. It should be available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got an answer for you. Would anyone else like to address council? Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Carla Waltman, city resident. I want to continue with what I was reading last weekend, or last week, about the resolution that I hopefully you have really not acted upon at this point because you're still doing your due diligence for research. One of the papers that I just gave you is some contact information and also a video that you could watch that might answer some of your questions about something Mr. Gohan had said last week. But this is in reference to Chapter 317 noise. I got cut off at a certain point, but I want to go back through a couple of things. Prohibited Acts A1A, this prohibited act requirement is exactly the same as the PA Liquor Control Board, that noise does not cause a disturbance across the real property boundary. 317-7 prohibited Acts A4, loudspeaker public address systems, is exactly the same as the PA Liquor Control Board, that the noise does not cause a disturbance across the real property boundary. 317-8, sound level limits by the receiving land use district, 10 feet inside a lot in a residential district, Monday through Saturday until 9:00 PM excluding major holidays, is 69 decibels. 70 decibels is a dishwasher. My house is about 225 feet away from that gentleman's property, that bar. By law, I should not be able to hear a dishwasher from that distance. From 9:00 PM until 7:00 AM, all day Sunday and all major holidays, the sound level decibel is 64, which is between an air conditioner and a dishwasher. By law, I should not be able to hear a dishwasher or an air conditioner from that distance. Pertaining to the language in your resolution, Scranton is no longer a Class 2A city. It was reclassified as a Class 3 city on October 1st, 2021. And also, Section 203 of the Homer Choder authorized the city council to adopt legislation for the maintenance of peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city and its residents, not just bars, nightclubs, and restaurants. From what I am saying here to all of you is that the laws are there. They are the same as the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. The one thing that is different is the enforcement. With the liquor control enforcement, the neighborhoods will see the correct enforcement. With the city enforcing its own noise ordinance, you will get no enforcement. I saw it happen. I was a witness to it. I lived it. I had to fight hard to be able to live in peace and quiet so that my neighborhood and neighbors who work non-typical shifts could sleep for work and school. My house is no longer being rocked by pounding bass and loud music. I ask you not to go any further with that resolution. Could you tell me at this point where that resolution is?
So we passed that resolution and it was voted 5-0 by the council. Now, I will give this to our solicitor and have him review this information, but to answer your question, it was passed 5-0.
Have you already scheduled an appointment with the Liquor Control Enforcement, or Liquor Control Board, I guess?
I believe now the, it's in their hands to schedule. It was sent, I think, to the Liquor Control Board, the resolution. I think they were notified. And now it's on them to have public hearings throughout, I believe, throughout the city, each section of the city.
Didn't the mayor have to sign off on this?
I believe the mayor did, yes.
The mayor approved it?
When the mayor's, yeah, the mayor has 10 days from, did the mayor sign it, Frank? I think she did.
Yes, she did.
Yeah, she did. So when she signed it, it officially becomes law.
So she's okay with rocking, then the neighborhoods with noise too?
Well, I mean, we, I understand your argument, but when we looked at this whole issue, you know, from 300 feet up in the air, we felt that it was in the best interest of the neighbor. We heard from several neighbors who were not opposed to the noise.
Who do, who do I call when things don't get better? When, when the ordinances are not being taken care of by the Scranton police? Who do I call? Do I call you?
No, there'd be nothing that I could do. I, I think the, the, the argument that I made last week or the week before, when this was in final passage, was that he is authorized by the zoning board to have an outdoor, outdoor seating and outdoor music. So he's authorized by the zoning board to do that, is what my understanding. So for then us to say that he can't do that until a certain time at night wasn't fair to the business, I didn't think.
He is allowed to do that, but he still has to abide by both noise ordinances.
Right.
And that's what you guys aren't understanding. He didn't do it before and he's not going to do it again. The only one that stopped him was the Liquor Control Enforcement.
Okay.
And now you're going to tie their hands and now we, as neighbors, won't have anybody to help us because you say you're not going to do anything about it.
Okay, well, I will give this to our solicitor to review again, and then when there are public hearings, they'll be published in the newspaper for further comment on it. It's not official official yet until the PLCB gives their approval. Okay?
Yeah, you need to, you need to call down to Volksberry.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Okay, Frank?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, any motions or comments this evening?
No, nothing at this time.
Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, so we once again received a weekly update from OECD regarding, regarding resident complaints. And for the complaint regarding the Vine Street Station, which is at the corner of Vine Street and Prescott Avenue, and that's been closed down for many years now, it had said under there that there was a car removed, but I'm not sure if it was another vehicle, but there's currently a truck or SUV that's, that's parked there now that has graffiti all over it. There's still plenty of overgrown weeds, there is a broken glass, there, there are some windows that are boarded up, but the one that's not, the glass is broken, there's a mattress randomly, there's plenty of trash over there. So it really looks quite horrendous and affects the neighborhood. So I'd like to, once again, find out some more information about it, get SPD over there to tag that vehicle if it has not been already and have that, that, that property updated because it's, it's clearly not, not fixed. And then one of the other properties on the list is towards the lower end of the 400 block of East Gibson Street. And I, myself have passed by this property numerous times and the overgrown shrubbery, I mean, it's, it's out into the street. I think there's a, there are some junk vehicles, including a boat, that also seems to be out onto the street partially. So I did not see any updates. That's been on the list for a few weeks and I'm not sure if it was missed, but there's nothing written under there. So I would like to check in again regarding that, that property. And that's everything. Thank you.
I'll reach out on both properties. Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. Councilman Dunning, any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier this evening, I want to give everybody an update on the 2022 budget timeline in terms of, you know, what we're going to do moving forward here when we entertain the mayor's budget. So the, the legislation, the budget will be placed in fifth order for introduction on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. Council will most likely receive the budget the week prior because it has to be placed on our agenda and there's things that we have to do in our office. On Tuesday, November 16th, the mayor, the director of the Office of Economic and Community Development and Licensing Inspections and Permits will be here at 5:00 PM for a public work session, we're calling it, where they will present, the mayor will present an overview of the budget and then we'll get into specifics in terms of OECD and licensing and inspection. So that'll be at 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 16th. On five, at 5:00 PM Thursday, November 18th, we'll have the director of DPW and Parks and Recreation, so we'll be focusing on those two departments. 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 23rd, we'll have the chief of police and the chief of the fire department. 5:00 PM on Thursday, December 2nd, we'll have the business administrator, the IT department, there's no director, but I'm assuming Mr. Dealey will be there to represent the IT department, the treasury department, and human resources. I do believe that the BA will be at every single one of these, but since IT, treasury, and HR fall under the business administrator umbrella in terms of the, the way the budget's laid out, that will be the specific time period where we'll focus on that. So that will be the layout. So again, introduced Tuesday, November 16th, the second reading will be November 23rd. We'll table the budget, as we usually do every year, on November 23rd. Tuesday, November 30th, at 5:45 PM, we'll have a public hearing. This will all be advertised in the newspaper. And then we'll have final passage of the budget either December 7th or December 14th, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Now, the reason that I've always wanted to do it this way, but could never get it done for many different reasons, this is the most transparent way to look at the budget. There, I don't think there is any other good way to do it. We should have every department director in here, in front of not only the council but the public, to explain their budget. If there's going to be a new position, if there's going to be a salary increase, they're in their departments, working with their, the city employees every day, let's have them defend their decisions and, and the asks that they're making to not only council but the public. It will give us a much better idea of the thought process behind the budget. In the, I still think this is a bit rushed and the people from the public have mentioned that before. I would have liked to do this months ago, but we weren't able to successfully do that. But this does give us a good roadmap to make an educated decision on the budget. And I think it will be very informative for the public as well. And I'm hoping that this will continue years afterward. And as I've mentioned here in the last few months, this isn't anything groundbreaking. They do this in the county, they do it at the school board, they do it all over the state and the country. So we need to start doing this here so that we can make educated and, and good financial decisions on the budget. Okay? So if there's any questions on that, just let me know. But at this time, I'd like to make a motion to have our city clerk, Frank Voldenberg, place legal advertisements in the new, in the Scranton Times that details the, the budget timeline and process.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. On the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion passes. So Mr. Voldenberg will place that advertisement in the newspaper, we'll see if we can get it on the website, and I'm sure it will, there'll be some sort of article or blurb about it. Prior to receiving the budget, and I've asked for this a few weeks ago, and I'm, I'm going to ask again tonight, and I think the mayor and the department directors will agree with this request. Council would like a list of all the new positions that were included in the 2020 budget and an explanation of what value they brought to the city this year, whether it was increased revenue, whether it was increased productivity, efficiency. So if we're going to approve new positions in this budget, which we're not sure yet what that looks like, we want to know exactly what, how these new positions that the mayor asked us to approve last year, what kind of impact that they've had. I think that's only fair. We, I am very concerned that we have not received any legislation yet on two very crucial pieces to our exit from Act 47 and two recommendations that were in our Act 47 plan, a debt management policy and a fund balance policy. Now, I've been told that we're getting close to receiving legislation and we're going to receive it, but we haven't received it yet. So Frank, if you can check in with the law department on that, it's very, very important. I believe that we may end, just like last year, with a little, a fund balance in our budget, which is new to the city of Scranton. So we do need to have a policy in place, I think, and so does our recovery coordinator on what that looks like and how to manage it moving forward. I asked several questions, council asked questions about the Safer Grant, sent a month, month and a half ago? No answer. Spoken to the mayor and the business administrator about it, they're supposed to send something over. This will most likely have budget implications if they do intend to move forward with adding 10 new firemen. So the quicker we get those answers, the better because we're going to have to make a decision on it, I think. Still no response on an overall plan for the pools at Naught Park. I'm not going to get on my soapbox about that because I've said it here before, but we need to know what the mayor's plan is. They're going to demolish the pools and the longer that sits vacant, the worse it is for our young people and our residents in the city of Scranton. I asked about the citywide DPW paving project, so I did request the paving list. I also asked why we have not seen any movement on the OECD paving project. Usually that occurs in the fall. The OECD executive director, Eileen Cipriani, did advise us that the engineering firm has completed the design and they're awaiting review of the ADA ramp drawings. Once this is completed, the spec book will be finalized in place, I'll forbid, but I'm assuming now that that's a spring project and not a fall project. So Frank, if you can double-check on that, but I don't think there'll be enough time to do that this fall. We should be receiving a monthly collections report from Portnoy Law Associates. Ms. Schumacher had, had asked about that, so I believe we're, we should receive that relatively soon. And then there was a woman who had reached out to me about severe flooding in the 3200 block of Powell Court in Bernie Avenue, and we did send that request to DPW to revisit the issue. This is an issue that's been going on since the Peters administration in the 1970s. So I would like an update on that. The other thing we need to find out about is the garage on Wyoming Avenue, Al Young's issue and the people's issue on Wyoming Avenue. The controller signed an emergency order to take the garage down as of today. As of today, the garage is still standing, so I, I really not sure why it has not been knocked down yet, but if we can get an update on that. I've asked several times now about the Sappa legislation. Dunmore has put it on hold. I believe every other community that's been within, that's been working on this now since 2014 or 15, within the Scranton-Avington Plannings Association, has approved it. Dunmore put it on hold to see what Scranton was going to do. We haven't received anything yet. Now, I don't even know if we'll have enough time to get that accomplished before the end of the year, because it has to be three readings, and I believe a 30-day, or a, or a public hearing, or some kind of comment period. So if you can check with the administration on that, I would appreciate it. I know we do not have an HR director anymore, and we know how crucial of a position that is. I've asked a very, very simple, basic question, how many employees we have out on compensation and disability? And we, all we get is crickets. So I know that Jessica Esker now is leading the charge in the HR department, Frank, so if you can send that directly to her to see if we can get that question answered, it shouldn't take more than five minutes.
I will, sir.
Okay? And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, reading by title. File the council number 89, 2021, an ordinance approving the inter-municipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R14696, currently owned by Michael A. Mecca II, and located at 224 Erie Street, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18510, to Galley Family Food Mart Inc., the food mart, located at 801 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18505, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? On the question, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, but next Tuesday, November 9th, we'll have a public hearing on this at 5:45, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So if anyone's interested in, in commenting on this again, next Tuesday, November 9th, at 5:45, we'll have a public hearing. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table item 6A.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table item 6A. This ordinance is being tabled until the public hearing can be held on November 9th. On the question? On the question, we'll put this in eighth order then, and that'll remain in eighth order until we take it off the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file the council number 83, 2021, as amended, amending file the council number 65, 2021, an ordinance entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1st, 2021, by amending the 2021 Action Plan by adding $350,000 under the Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund to assist new and existing businesses within the city of Scranton through the Business Loan to Grant Program.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
As amended. Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, file of the council number 88, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Bedrock Technology, AKA Keystone Technology Consulting, LLC, to provide information technology management services.
Thank you. This piece of legislation is currently tabled, it will remain tabled. We are still looking at this and this piece of legislation, and I think all of us agree, as we've stated previously, that we may need to have further conversations with the IT department and look at this in terms of the overall budget, because this is a very large cost. So we'll leave that on the table for now. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Have a good night. Thank you.